Copy of my recommendations over to Joe that went over to the Board of Adjustment. I do not see anything for you.
He, you have to ask Joe, but I just gave him my opinions and he took them down.
Okay.
And if you want to know what they were at that time, I'm not saying they haven't changed a little bit, but I will say what I sent to him.
Okay.
I was, first of all, because very concerned about the bonding capabilities. And I said it needed to be reviewed every three years. And with the engineer that was hired by the county, but I think that the financial part of that would have to be against the bond itself by other people. And I think it, and that would, at that time, we'd have to determine what the bond would be. I'm not saying any $1 right now, though what a complete cleanup of the site would be. And also, at that time, I felt 1 kilometer setback on everything. It was the minimum because of the information I had at that time.
And 1 kilometer is 3,200 feet, something along that?
Thirty-two something.
Thirty-two seven?
Forty-eight.
Eighty.
Thirty-two eighty. Thirty-two eighty. I just remembered, just thirty-two something.
Okay. Chad, you?
Hey, if you'd give me a little attitude, I've made some points I wanted to discuss on paper. Rather than getting flustered and forget them, I put them in a form here. I'm just going to read down through it.
Okay.
And so.
Can we have a copy of?
You bet. I'll.
We're front and back.
Yeah.
I do have one more thing to say, great.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, not the two one within part. You can start, please. The other thing I forgot about was the, if there were wires or cables buried, it needed to be at least 50 feet behind ours right away to giving, because I didn't want it close to anything that we would ever have to get close to.
Buried only?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Chad.
Okay. One, I'm just going to read it the way I wrote it here. No disrespect or anything like that, but I was just going to learn that my out of state absence that was made on record and a request to be present during any discussion of the P and Z recommendations during the 9/26/24 BOS meeting did not happen. That discussion was on the agenda, but could have easily been tabled until the next BOS meeting, which would allow 33% of the Board of Supervisor Board to be present, take part personally, and hear personally what was being said and done rather than be relying on a public videotape of what was happening. Two, there are several questions that I would like to learn very definite, very definitive answers to before we, I think we should move forward. One, that would be the, excuse me. What was the date the alternative energy overlay was originally put into place in Henry County? I think it was '22. What was the initiating factor or the reason for creating the alternate energy overlay district at that time? What was the impetus or what was the motivating factor that that was ever created? Then four, what was the date of the very first mention of the wind energy interest in Henry County? I believe I was the first one to mention in our meetings here of any interest after the RWE rep showed up at my home that one time. The date right now, it slides fast and I didn't have it available. Was the development and codification of the overlay district in any way, shape, or form started or initiated by any wind energy or solar energy development? Was there a, was there a bug in the ear from any developer whatsoever looking down the future of how to put together a overlay district? You know, to get something done? Was the, you know, it just seemed like, how did this ever materialize? And then boom, hey, we got a wind energy product coming onboard here. You know, I would like to know the stepping of that, I guess. That's troublesome to me. The P and Z meeting seems to have been steered and directed by the administrator, in my opinion. Upon watching yet another private video of this meeting, it appears that the P and Z administrator interrupted and led and influenced the P and Z commission's actions and decisions. Again, this is watching a public video on YouTube that the audio wasn't the best, the microphone was used haphazardly, that type of thing. I think that gives an credence to, why don't we videotape and audiotape public meetings for everybody's use? I mean, in a good quality where you can understand it, you can hear it, you don't have to read lips, you know, from 50 feet away from the room, that type of thing. The meeting was closed that day with the understanding that another meeting would be scheduled. That meeting was then canceled. That seems wrong in my eyes. I mean, if a meeting is ended with the understanding that another meeting will take place and then scheduled, only to be canceled, it seems like there's other business, old business, that needs to be taking place, that needs to be taken care of before that. At the 9/26 Board of Supervisor meeting, it was reported that the P and Z recommended ordinance was legally indefensible and the reasons would not be shared with the public. Well, I wasn't there to ask that question, but I want to know why, what those reasons and talking points are that it wouldn't be defensible? Because I understand that the majority of the issues written down in that are utilized by other Iowa counties in their ordinances and everything. And it seems like if it's within the borders of Iowa and is good for here, it ought to be good for Iowa over here, you know? It just, you know, I'm not a legal beagle expert, I'm not a parliamentary expert or anything like that, but it just seems like the chain of events are different, you know, are changing as they go, you know, as the wind blows there, so to speak. Wind Energy Project has created unbelievable separation negative attitudes between everybody. I mean, it, I don't think there's too many people that haven't heard about it, don't have an opinion about it, and haven't been affected in some way with it. It's been said that the county's making decisions that are being made purely based on the perception of the county avoiding lawsuits from a mega company that has a track history of filing lawsuits in Iowa counties relating to opposition to the project. I mean, that's on record. We talked about it here, we talked about it to the RWE representatives, that, you know, is there that perception that if we don't allow something to happen in, within our county here, that a lawsuit would be filed? I've never heard the threat of that, but past history, I mean, if somebody doesn't get their way and they won't throw a lawsuit up in front of it, you know, that, I don't think that should be used as a, it seems like it's an intimidation factor in my mind. Maybe I'm oversimplifying it or looking at it in a wrong light, but, you know, it just seems like that's the wrong way, so. Then I made note here to myself that it is true that the county supervisor's decision should reasonably try to insulate the county from a lawsuit situation if possible, but not to the point of caving in on deeply held beliefs and convictions that the majority of the county population wants to have. I mean, if we want to have something, I mean, isn't that part of what we're doing is representing the public or the majority of the public, you know? We represent everybody, but, you know. Then I made note here, property rights go both directions. Ag ground should be used for ag-related uses. Farming, I'm not aware of any involved farm property being purchased by the owners with the sole intent to speculate or invest in the ability to use the ground for wind energy. That property was purchased to farm. Nobody is trying to stop this from happening. It's farm ground, go farm it. I mean, you bought, you know, if somebody bought property, that's what that is, is farm property. The property rights of a landowner with a newfound interest of hosting a wind/solar facility do not overrule or outweigh the rights of a non-participating landowner in enjoying their own private property freedoms from, free of any intrusion of an industrial venture of this. You know, we get into the thing of, it's a for-profit business, being subsidized in part by public monies at the expense of a property owner that doesn't want to have it there, you know? That just rubs me wrong for some reason or other. We don't know the long-term effects of living or being subjected to the presences of the noises, vibrations, flickers, all the different things, the myriad of things that have been talked about by people, pros and cons on it, of what the wind energy and things do. We don't know the hazards in the future, just like, and I was thinking, maybe it's a goofy analogy or anything, but, you know, 40 years ago, 45 years ago, there's certain herbicide that come on the market. That was the greatest thing since sliced bread, right? I mean, is that, and now what does it do? You can't turn a TV commercial on without a attorney, ambulance, chaser attorney wanting to get onto a lawsuit for the chemical use of that, you know? What does that do? You know, the same thing with asbestos. I mean, we all had asbestos on our plumbing pipes and our heat pipes and our ductwork and our brake shoes and everything, but what does asbestos do now? You know, 40 years down the road, 50 years down the road, we learn this type of stuff. I don't know what the long-term effects are, but who would have thought a certain brand of topin powder, J&amp;J Topin powder, would cause life-changing events for people that powdered their buff, you know, that type of thing? We just don't know the long-term effects of that. I think we owe it to the public not to rush this through. The year-end incentive programs of the developer, not a good reason. Mr. RWE, Nick, I believe, right? Is there an incentive to get, is there additional incentives right now in place that if a project would be started before the beginning of the new year or right around that new year, that a company would be entitled to and would not be entitled to if it starts after that? Can I comment?
You may comment. Hold it, let's keep it real brief.
Yeah, I'd like a yes or no answer. It was a yes or a no question, so.
Can it be the question?
Is there incentives in place right now that a developer would be entitled to get if the project starts before the new year?
What type of incentive? I guess, I don't.
I see where you're going. I mean, incentives, I mean, in a very broad, general term, incentives. Are there incentives in place that a developer would be entitled to get, take advantage of, if a project was built new year? If you don't know, just say no.
I don't, that's what I was going to say. I said.
Okay, thank you.
I'm personally unaware of it.
Thank you. All right, let's proceed, please. I'm going to start by reading the purpose and intent of what I submitted to Joe. I will state that a portion of this is from Madison County's Wind Energy Conversion Systems. The purpose of this ordinance is to establish minimum requirements and regulation of applicant, developer, owner engaged in the construction, erection, placement, location, maintenance, modification, and operation of a large-scale industrial wind energy project in Henry County. The intent of this ordinance is to ensure wind development sites are appropriately located to preserve and protect the following: the general welfare of the public, the character, image, and stability of Henry County's residential, tourism, recreational, agricultural, commercial, industrial, and other areas; the county's important and sensitive environmental and ecological assets and areas; open space, viewscapes, aesthetics, and wetlands. Accordingly, regulations are necessary to further the above goals and equally important to minimize the potential adverse effects of this emerging high-impact land use on adjacent properties. All commercial wind energy conversion systems, turbines, turbine projects, project substations, and project substations. So that is purpose and intent, and again, I have taken a portion of this from Madison County's ordinance in regard to wind energy conversion systems. Is there anything that either of you wish to add or delete? This is, this is what was basically given to our P and Z board. My input was given to the P and Z board. So, it is my understanding that the P and Z board said no to adoption of this. Am I incorrect or correct?
I think they objected and did not want to adopt the whole thing. I don't know if they took the purpose and intent portion specifically. I think they were looking at the overall whole.
Okay.
Have that clarification.
Having seen this portion and going on to the next, following down, I'll have Mark read a portion. So, Mark, I'm going to have you read Section 1, Definitions.
Okay. Aircraft Detection Lighting System, A, B, L, F. Lighting system that provides reliable, continuous 360-degree radar surveillance of the airspace around the site to automatically detect obstructions, lighting only to the aircraft that is detected in the defined outer perimeter. Adverse sound characters shall mean the sound that causes building, route, and impulsive tone or low, as a low-frequency noise rumble. Ambient is the definition as a background noise present to give, given scene or a location. AMSI is the American National Standard Institute. Audible gives the varying degree of sound perception as reported by, including but not limited to, just susceptible and audible, clear, audible, and unobjectable. The Board of Adjustment, A, B, is the board appointed by the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors is the board elected by Henry County residents. Commercial wind energy conversion system shall mean the purpose of this ordinance, a turbine owned and operated by the energy corporation or the commercial entity to generate electricity by converting the energy of wind into electrical energy to... Okay, that's where mine stops.
Okay.
It's the end of it.
Yep.
So.
Chad, you have the next page, and Mark, let's go to 6-2-11-2, Alternate Energy Overlay District.
Okay.
If you'll read that down through 6-2-11-3.
Statement of Intent. The purpose of this section is to regulate the construction, installation, and operation of facilities designed to generate energy from alternative sources to include commercial solar energy systems, CSES, or commercial wind energy conversion systems, CWCs, in Henry County, in a matter that promotes economic development, protects property values, and ensures the protection of health, safety, and welfare of the public while also avoiding adverse aesthetics impacts to important areas such as agricultural land, conservation land, and other sensitive lands. This section does not repeal, abrogate, annul, impair, or interfere with any existing ordinance. Heading number 01. Information required to apply to rezone to alternate energy overlay districts. A written summary of the project, including a general description of the project and its appropriate approximate generating capacity. The name, address, phone numbers of the owners of and CSES and CWCs operators. The interconnection agreement. A site plan of the CSES or CWCs site showing. One, showing the boundaries of the site. All proposed CSES and CWCs structures, including the footprint of each structure and the height of the CSES measured to the top of the structure at minimum till, or maximum till, I'm sorry, and the CWCs measured from the tower base to the highest reach of the rotor tip. Property lines. Setback measurements. Locations of all existing structures within the project area with the uses identified and any existing structure within 300 feet of the project area with their uses identified to include utility lines, telephone lines, and any other lines, both above and below ground, within the property lines or radius of 200% of the tower height, whichever is greater. Topography lines in two-foot contours. Floodplain locations, if applicable. Location of all known communication towers, facilities within two miles of the proposed CWCs. Description of potential impacts on all nearby CSES, CWCs, and non-CWCs and wind resources on adjacent properties. Identification of significant migratory patterns and nesting areas of birds within two miles of CWCs projects. Eleven, an acoustical analysis of CWCs. Two, documentation of notification of the following agencies. Requests for reports, excuse me, requests for reports from the agencies below are to be sent by certified mail and provided to the county 30 days prior to the first planning and zoning commission public hearing on such matter. For the purpose of this section, it is recommended that any issues be addressed prior to the public hearing. Those agencies would be the Federal Aviation Administration, Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, U.S. Bureau of Land Management, Iowa Department of Transportation, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, Iowa Utilities Board, the Office of State Archaeologists, Henry County Engineers' Office, Henry County Historical Society, local EMS, Fire and Rescues, Mount Pleasant Airport, if any portion of the project intersects areas defined by local airport zoning ordinances.
Okay, thank you. Is there any things in this section, 6-2-11-2, that you wish to add to, delete?
As I.
Go ahead.
I've commented in the past that we make that request, or the developer makes that request to these alphabet series agencies, and then if we don't get any response back from them, it, the way it stands now, my understanding, we just give it a wave. We ask for that for a reason. I think we are entitled, and I think we're, I think it's reasonable to request a clearance letter from these agencies or a rejection letter from these agencies. I mean, we ask these public entities for the information. I think they're obligated to give us that information, whether, regardless of what direction it goes. I mean, there has to be an accountability for these agencies to provide that information that we request, or why bother? You know, why, what? So I would like to add the idea, and whatever wording we could come up with, is the request and a response back. I think it's unacceptable to allow a non-response back, so.
Chad, I'm going to ask you, the response would need to take place within 10 days, 20 days, 60 days?
The question is, if they didn't respond, what authority do we have?
Well, if they don't res-
Really?
Yeah.
Does it just stop the process?
I think the permitting on that could be held up until we get that information. I mean, if we don't, if we don't have a mechanism in place to, if we don't get that information and they just want to blow it off, I mean, why even bother to ask for it? I mean, they ask for my income tax every year, and if I blow that off, they come look me up, you know? There's a consequence for that, so why isn't there, why wouldn't there be a consequence for those agencies not providing it? I think we would hold that permitting until that.
On our end, I think that there needs to be a timeline put on it because you can't hold out something for infinitum. I guess I'm just going to say, if we don't have a response back from each and every one of these agencies, then the project's dead because we didn't get a response.
Yeah.
So, I'm looking for a number of days that the FAA, the Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Bureau of Land Management, I mean, I don't know, Chad. Some of these are federal.
Yeah.
Some of them are state.
Yeah.
A little more local.
And we all know government moves in huge paces, you know, fast paces. Would 180 days past the deadline be reasonable? I mean, 180 days is a long time. Or is 90 days more appropriate? I mean.
I think that's something that we need to, we need to decide on. If we don't get a response, then nothing goes forward. But then, again, I'm asking for- But then, again, I'm asking for, Mark?
First of all, are you going to send a certified letter to these so they have to sign knowing that they got it and knowing that we, that we want a response? I think you'd have, you'd have to do it. I don't know if that's part of your ordinance or your normal housekeeping that you'd have, that they'd be done that way.
It says, it does say, "Request for reports from agencies below are to be sent by certified mail and provided to the county."
Is that lower down lower?
No, it's up under top of the page. Documentation of notification following agencies.
Okay.
A, 2A. So they would be sent by certified mail.
Okay, I see that. So that's 30 days prior.
Before the, "Provided to the county 30 days prior to the first PMZ commission public hearing on such matter."
So...
So you send the letter. How much time do you give them to get a response back to you?
Well, I'm just looking, I don't, maybe 30 days is enough, first of all, because you look at some of them, they might not be, be on a regular basis.
I don't believe that's what it's saying.
No, but I'm saying for them to respond back.
For them to respond back.
That's why I'm getting that.
I think 30 days is, yeah, I would agree with that. But is 60 days enough? Is 180 days enough? Because when you're, when you send these letters out, okay, and you're asking for a response, you have one, two, three, four. Four listed here that are federal agencies. COR, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Bureau of Land Management, Army Corps of Engineers, and the Federal Aviation Administration. You have one, two, three, four that are state organizations, and you have one, two, three, four that are local. What do we allow the federal government, what would we request the federal government to respond to us?
You know, should that information be available? I mean, to make a well-informed, educated decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission, would not that information be helpful in, in coming to a decision?
You know, a letter response to each one of these?
Yeah. Prior to hearing it. I mean, if, you know, if I'm on the PMZ and, okay, I'm expecting a letter from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, well, if that doesn't tell me anything, there might be some, some sardine in the river, you know, that is protected or whatever. I mean, I would want to know that information prior to moving forward on the planning and zoning. Or the eagle's nest that's, you know, building the tree row over there, or, you know, that's what, that's what these clearance letters are indicating, right?
I still think we need a timeline, right? And I don't know how much time you give the federal government, or we would request to the federal government. Do you believe four months is enough? 120 days? Do you believe 180 days is enough time? Do you believe 90 days is enough time, or 60?
90 days.
Do you believe 90 days?
Even 60 should be, I think, should be enough.
I mean, the federal government can do other things in pretty rapid succession if they want to do it. So I, I would go with the 90 days. I mean...
Okay, I'm gonna input then 90-day response.
So F-2, you think that...
Well, basically that... 90 days, counting nine days.
There's 90 days there.
Yeah, cross out, cross out the 30, 40, 90. Okay, I will read any other corrections, additions, violations. I'm gonna read six dash two dash eleven dash three. Requirements for commercial solar energy systems within the alternate overlay district. Oh, I'm gonna read it, but I think basically we've combined this with the intent in C2 Aladdin 2. So I will, I will go ahead and read it. Requirements for commercial solar energy systems within the alternate energy overlay district moved and combined with C commercial energy, CWES purposes and intent to six two dash eleven dash two. General requirements for CSES. Height shall not exceed 15 feet at the maximum tilt of solar panels. B setbacks. The front yard setbacks shall be a minimum of 50 feet from the edge of the right-of-way, which from the outside perimeters of a CSES project area and 100 feet from the residence that is part of the CSES project area. The Board of Adjustment may grant an exception to the setback requirements if, if the proposed or existing buffer is sufficient to screen the project from viewing, from view of adjoining property or public right-of-way if the owners of the adjoining properties agree in writing to waive these setback requirements. Two, in the case of a CSES to be built on more than one parcel and parcels are a bunion, a zero side or rear setback shall be permitted to the property line in common with a budding parcel. Three, solar panels shall be at least 300 feet from a residence that is not part of the CSES project area. The Board of Adjustment may grant an exception to the setback requirement if the proposed or existing buffers, buffer, excuse me, buffer is sufficient to screen the project from viewing of an adjoining property or public right-of-way if the owners of the adjoining properties agree in writing and waive these setback requirements. Four, solar panels shall be at least 80 feet from the state right-of-way and at least 60 feet from the county right-of-way. C, screening. A landscape buffer may be required to be installed and maintained during the life of the operation. Determination of screening requirements will be made by the Board of Supervisors as part of the review and approval process and will be based on adjacent or nearby surrounding land use and topography. D, fencing. A security fence of at least six feet in height but no greater than eight feet shall enclose the CSES to restrict access to the public. E, lighting. If lighting is provided for the CSES, lighting shall be shielded and downcast such that the light does not project directly onto the parcels, adjacent parcels. F, noise. Noise level caused by the CSES measured at the property line shall not exceed 60 decibels when located adjacent to an existing resident or residential district. G, installation and design. The CSES shall be designed and located in such a fashion as to prevent the player towards an inhabitant building on adjacent properties as well as adjacent roadways. H, utility connections. Reasonable efforts shall be made to place all utility connections from the solar installation underground depending upon appropriate soil conditions, shape, and topography of the site and distance to the connection, or their conditions or requirements. I, outdoor storage. Only the outdoor storage and materials, vehicles, and equipment that directly support the operation and maintenance of the CSES shall be allowed. J, endangered species and wetlands. Applicant shall seek natural resource consultation with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. K, weed control. An applicant must present an acceptable weed grass control plan for property inside and outside fenced area for the entire property. The operating company during the operation of the solar farm must maintain the fence and adhere to the weed control plan. L, chemical, cleaning chemicals and solvents. During operation of the proposed installation, all chemicals or solvents used to clean photovoltaic, volatile, I'm not sure how to pronounce that right, panels shall be low in organic, volatile organic compounds, and the operator shall use recyclable or biodegradable products to the extent possible. Any onsite storage of chemicals or solvents shall be referenced on the site plan. Two, avoidance and mitigation of damages to public infrastructure. Road use agreements. All routes on county roads that will be used for the construction and maintenance purposes shall be identified on the site plan. All routes for either egress or ingress or egress shall be shown. I'm going to put in here, if I may, CS, CS, too many, too many acronyms. CSES or CWES shall obtain applicable weight and size permits from the impacted road authorities prior to the construction. The CSES and/or CWES developer must complete and provide a pre-construction baseline survey, including photographs to determine existing road conditions for assessing potential future damage due to development, development-related traffic. The developer shall provide a road repair plan to ameliorate any and all damage, installation, or replacement of roads that might be required. The applicant is responsible for ongoing road maintenance and dust control measures identified by the Henry County Engineer during all phases of construction, I added, and decommissioning. Okay, section B is repositioned from following section five. Required financial security. The applicant shall be responsible for restoring or paying damages as agreed by the applicable road authorities sufficient to restore the roads and bridges to pre-construction, pre-construction conditions. Financial security in a manner approved by the Henry County Attorney's Office shall be submitted covering, initially there was 130% of the cost of all required improvements. I replaced that with 150% and adjusted yearly for inflation. This requirement may be waived by the Board of Adjustment by recommendation from the Henry County Engineer. Three, soil erosion and sediment control. The applicant agrees to conduct all road work and other site development work in compliance with a national pollutant discharge elimination system. NPDES permit as required by the State Department of Natural Resources and comply with requirements as detailed by local jurisdictional authorities during the plan's submission. If subject to the NPDES requirements, the applicant must submit permit for review and comment in an erosion and sediment control plan before beginning construction. The plan must include both general best management practice for temporary erosion and sediment control, both during and after construction, and permanent drainage and erosion control measures to prevent both damage to local roads, backlash, adjacent areas, and sediment-laden runoff into waterways. Drainage system. The applicant shall be responsible for immediate repair to damage to public drainage systems stemming from construction operation of the CSES or CWES. Discontinuation and decommission. A CSES or CWES shall be considered a discontinued use after one year. I wrote in six months without energy production unless a plan is developed and submitted to the director outlining the following steps and schedule for removing the CSES or CWES to service. The CSES or CWES owner or representative shall provide the county with a notice of abandonment as soon as three months. It did say as soon as practicable, practical, practicable. I, I inserted three months. F, decision to discontinue the CSES or CW, CS, yes. All CSES or CWES and ancillary facility, B, okay. All CWES and CSES and ancillary facilities shall be removed to four feet below ground level within 180 days of discontinuation of use. All CWES, CSES shall have a decommissioning plan outlining the anticipated means and cost of removing CSES, CWES at the end of their serviceable life or upon becoming a discontinued use. The plan shall describe any agreement with the landowner regarding equipment removal upon lease termination. D, the cost estimates to decommission the CSES, CWES shall be made at the applicant's expense by a professional engineer licensed in the state of Iowa and approved by the county. The plan shall also identify the financial resources be available to pay for the decommission and removal of the CSES, CWES, and ancillary facilities, including transportation, disposal of equipment, and final cleanup of all sites. A performance bond or equivalent financial instrument approved by Henry County shall be posted in an amount determined by the county. The bond shall be in favor of Henry County in the amount of at least, and $1 million was put in there, I penciled in $5 million.
Is that per tower or side or how is that?
That would be, that would be per site.
Okay.
And that's in my opinion. Okay? Any comment?
On all what you read?
Oh, let me, let me go, let me finish, and then we'll go back. Okay. E, following the initial approval of a sitting permit for CSES or CWES, the owner or operator shall continually renew the financial security every three years throughout the lifespan of the CSES or CWES. At the time of each renewal, the cost estimate shall be reevaluated under the same procedure as outlined in section D of this article. F, the owner or operator shall provide the board with a notice of their intent to continue operations no less than 180 days prior to the three-year anniversary of the previous bonding filing or renewal, and shall supply the renewed financial security to the board no less than 90 days prior to that anniversary. G, if the financial security has not yet been renewed at neither 90 days prior to the anniversary of the previous board bond filing or renewal, then the owner or operator shall take the steps to begin the decommissioning of the CSES or CWES at that time. H, each time the financial security is filed or renewed, it shall be accompanied by a written agreement that stipulates it will apply to all future successors, assignees, or heirs to which responsibility for operating the system may be transferred between the time of the filing and the next renewal. I, the financial security shall be, only be released once the Board of Supervisors can confirm that the land has been restored to its condition prior to the construction of the CSES or CWES, including the remediation of any contamination. J, the county reserves the right to verify that adequate decommissioning terms are contained in the landowner easement. Okay, let's go back. If you have any suggestions, changes?
Should the, under F, noise?
Okay.
Would it be a good idea to be consistent on noise emissions?
Okay, you're, you're okay. F, noise levels caused by the CSES, CWES measured by the property line shall not exceed 60 decibels when located adjacent to existing residence or residential district.
I think that the noise is the noise is the noise, you know, regardless of what it's coming from, and I think it'd probably be a good idea to be consistent on whatever project it would be, the, the emitted noise or the, the noise heard be consistent between the project.
And I believe when we go further in there, there is a decibel noise when we get further into the, further into the ordinance.
Yeah.
Under six dash two dash eleven dash four. So do you, do you wish to change it to a certain decibel or just that you're saying this needs to be consistent?
I think we need to be consistent between the two, in my opinion.
And we can determine as we go along.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, who is going to control a few of these things, like, I'm going to talk about weed control and that, on that, that was on tape. I mean, who's going to determine what's adequate and what's not adequate, that kind of stuff? Is that, I'm, I'm just, I mean, someone could say the grass is six inches high and it's too old, you know, that's what I'm coming up with. too old, you know, that's what I'm coming up with, or there's dandelion, or something.
You know, the county employees, the weed commissioner, would that be in his lane of travel there?
I think what you're getting at is during the site plan, they're going to give your site plans as to how they're going to maintain it, and you're going to look at it and say, yes, I think this is adequate to take care of it, or no, it's not, and then whatever you decide is adequate, then it's up to me to look at what you say is adequate and, you know, hold them accountable to it.
And I do like the bonding, I wrote that down.
The five million dollar per site. Chad, do you have anything else to add or delete or change?
The inventory of the road condition, I mean, does that amount to the engineer driving at 55 down the highway and looking at it, or does that entail a more detailed look, you know, see if any culverts are crushed prior to any construction? I mean, we want to be fair about it. We, you know, we need to look at the road condition, get an inventory of it, and to what degree does that inventory amount to?
You know, same, there should be a timeframe even after that inventory's taken. Can something pop up and have some ramifications?
Because one thing I've found talking to other area residents in the Monizuma area and whatnot is, the roads take a beating. They just take a beating. So, we, we don't want to be beat.
Let me ask you, in the road use agreement, would that be stipulated?
I thought it was under that.
It doesn't give a timeline, it doesn't give a timeline.
You know, the condition.
You mentioned a timeline.
I'm worried about if something shows up two to three years later, you know, that can definitely.
The base gets mashed out of things, the people tell me that the base gets pushed out, the ditches get spread out, you know, we're talking heavy, heavy weights moving on secondary roads that were not designed for 280,000, 300,000 pound tower sections moving up and down, so.
It says here, must complete and provide a pre-construction baseline survey. This is what, this is the entire road system that they're going to act on, what it exists at, at that time, which then gives them reason to come back and say, this is not what it was, and, I mean, to a certain degree, you've got to leave it to your county engineer, he knows his roads, he should be able to go through that inventory and know what he's concerned about, know what the bases of the roads are, the culverts and so on. And once you have a baseline, if it's five years down the road, and you say, here's how it was before your project, and now it's crumbled, and we think you caused it, you've got that baseline, you're probably going to enter in court anyway, because they're going to deny that they did it five years down the road, but you've got a baseline survey, you've got pictures taken, you've got the engineer report, and then it's going to be a matter of, you know, judge and or jury deciding, I mean, there's no way to say you have to do this, especially five years down the road, it's going to have, it's going to require some new process and some, you know, as I said, probably a court, unless it's something pretty obvious, that you couldn't have caused anything else, and you're probably going to get some action, but otherwise, five years down the road, it's going to be probably some kind of a suit. But as I said, a lot of that is up to Jake to go, to have a good inventory, and that, and, you know, his inventory, you guys are going to look at it and say, yeah, we think you've covered everything there is to cover, or, no, we think that you should have caught this and this and this. So, he's not the final word, because the site plan's going to come to the board, and if you don't, you don't like that survey, you can increase it.
I would say that, you know, none of us are a civil engineer or a, you know, road construction engineer. We don't know what to look for in that other, you know, if a, if a crown's mashed out and you've got a depression in the center of the road, we got a problem there, obviously, but that is the engineers. But to what degree will this inventory amount to, you know? Is it a quick drive down the road, if it looks good, or, or do we?
The engineer will have to find out.
Put it back to the engineer and.
The engineer's not, he's not going to want to pay for a lot of damage that they did, so he's going to want a thorough survey to push as much cost on to that company as he possibly can.
I'm going to go back to five discontinuation and decommissioning. I believe later in what I presented to Joe, the P and Z board was to go four feet below ground level, it says all CSES, it's 5B, all C W E S and CSES and accessory facilities shall be removed to four feet below ground level within 180 days of continuation of use. I believe I changed it later on, so. Chad, do you have any recommendations or?
Is that, I mean, the lay of the land, would that be determinant of how deep something needs to go to?
Below the level of ground.
Yeah.
Below ground level regardless of where in Europe.
Yeah, but proximity to things, I mean, we all know that they bury things a little deeper in some places just to avoid, you know, routine maintenance, I mean, if, if the, I'm asking, I'm not a subject expert on that by any means, but I'm asking, four foot deep isn't tremendously deep for removal? No, for, yeah, the removal, you know? Two days ago, I had a conversation with a Tyler, or yesterday, I guess, a commercial Tyler, put field tile on, he says he goes up to five and a half feet deep right off the go-go putting field tile in. You got 18 inches there to, you know, four foot, five and a half, so where, where is that happy medium there? I don't, you know, would that be, would that be something that a, an electrical utility expert in the area would be consulted?
We're here talking on private land. The person who signed the lease has to be responsible for a lot of this stuff.
That's all on them and?
And I think that we might be just helping them out a little bit, and so, I'm not too worried about some of that. I can go with five either way, I, yeah, four feet isn't much, they're not going to grow in certain years, they're not going to grow much anyway on it, so it doesn't matter that way. They've made the decision to lease the land.
Correct. So, I'm asking, shall we change that to five?
I like five, I think for me to be consistent, I like.
Okay, because later on, I know I changed it to five. Any further changes, suggestions?
You know, the decommissioning, we've kicked it around and kicked it around. Does your theory and thought process hold true with the whole pedestal foundation part of removal?
You mean, just to five feet?
Yeah, just to five feet or? I get what you're saying, kind of.
Yeah, I think that the landowner has ownership and he's made that decision, so I think five feet is fine. I mean, we don't know the future, but I think that's the best we can guess.
I mean, I like the idea of a removal, but it's not that I'm going to be a stickler on that, you know, it's, I like the idea, I mean, if it wasn't there before, why should it be left there later?
No, I agree, I will agree with Mark, the fact of the matter is, it's, some of this has to go back onto the landowner who leased their ground for the CSES or C W E S to be erected, I mean, they have the whole part of that in their own responsibilities as a landowner.
Kind of piggyback along on that, I mean, it's, it's off the subject a little bit, but, has there ever been a good explanation why the property wouldn't be purchased by the developer versus leasing? I mean, truly, I would think it would be cheaper for a developer to buy and maintain an acre, eight or an half, or two acres, or a five acre chunk, or whatever, per unit, and maintain it, be responsible for that, everything, versus leasing it? Has that ever been answered well?
There never will be. They have their reasons and want it to be.
Any further?
They could go out and, they could often say, I'll buy this land for you for this purpose, but they don't do it, so.
Is there regulations in place that prohibit?
There's no, there's no problem, it's undivided.
Right, it would have to, it would have to be some sort of regulations. As far as separating it, they have to survey it and do deed work and everything associated. It would happen to be multiple pieces in one 40-year crack in terms of something being different things.
But you'd think it'd be way cheaper to purchase that than it would be to lease it for 30, 40 years, whatever. So, there has to be a mechanism, or there has to be a reason they're not purchasing those segments of ground, but that's.
It could be, I mean, it could be tax, there are tax advantages to leasing as opposed to, part of the reason high knee builds stores is when they sell them to somebody else and lease them back, it's a, it's something that they're trying to tell.
Okay, we'll continue on. Six dash two dash 11 dash four, requirements for commercial wind energy systems within the alternate energy overlay district, moved and combined with six dash two dash 11 dash two. General requirements for C W E C S, color and finish. Wind turbines shall be painted a non-reflective color. Blades may be black in order to facilitate deicing. Finishes shall be matte or non-reflective. At C W E C S sites, the design of the buildings and related structures shall, to the extent reasonably possible, use materials, colors, textures, screening, and landscaping that will blend the C W E C S to natural setting in the existing environment. Exceptions may be made if meteorological towers or concerns exist relative to aerial spray applicators. B, tower configuration. All wind turbines which are part of the C W E C S shall be installed with a tubular monopole-type tower. Meteorological towers may be guided. C, lighting. C W E C S sites shall not be artificially lighted except to the extent required by the FAA or other applicable authority. Light, lighting, including lighting intensity and frequency of strobe shall adhere but not, but, shall adhere to but not exceed requirements established by the Federal Aviation Administration permits and regulations. Red strobe lights are preferred for nighttime illumination to reduce impacts on migrating birds. Red pulsating incandescent lights shall be avoided. Exceptions may be made for meteorological towers where concerns exist relative to aerial spray applicators. D, signage. The manufacturer's or owner's company name and/or logo may be placed upon the compartment containing the electrical generator of the C W E C S. Wind turbines shall not be used for displaying any advertising except for reasonable identification, excuse me, of the manufacturer or operator of the C W E C S sites. E, feeder lines. All communication and feeder lines equal to or less than 34.5 KV in capacity installed as part of a C W E S, E C S shall be buried, I added, five feet or greater. F, waste disposal. Solid and hazardous waste, including but not limited to crates, packaging materials, damage or worn parts, as well as used oils and lubricants, shall be removed from the site in a time period as established by the Henry County Health Department, and disposed of in accordance with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations. Minimum ground clearance. The blade tip of any wind turbine shall at its lowest point have ground clearance no less than 75 feet. Signal interference. The applicant shall mitigate all interference with electromagnetic communication such as radio, telephone, or television signals caused by any C W E C S. Federal aviation. All C W E C S shall comply with FAA standards and permits. Electrical codes and standards. All C W E C S and accessory equipment and facilities shall comply with the National Electrical Code and other applicable standards. Setbacks. The following setbacks and separation requirements shall apply to all wind turbines and meteorological towers provided that the Board of Adjustment, upon recommendation by the commission, may reduce the standard setbacks and separation requirements if the intent of this ordinance shall be better served thereby. All other structures shall comply with the applicable setbacks as defined by the base zone district. Structures. Each wind turbine and meteorological tower shall be set back from the nearest, initially there was residence, school, hospital, church, or public library. I put in all structures a distance no less than the greater of three times its total height or, okay, a one, 2,500 feet. I also added in here, there must be a one-mile radius of all incorporated and/or unincorporated Property lines. At no time shall any part of the wind turbine and meteorological tower overhang an adjoining property without securing appropriate easements from adjoining property owners. Public right-of-way. Setbacks from public right-of-way railroads, power lines, and structures shall be a minimum of 1.5 times the height of the tower and rotor. D, communication and electrical lines. Each wind turbine and meteorological tower shall be set back from the nearest above-ground public electric power line or telephone line, a distance no less than 1.5 times its total height, determined from the existing power line or telephone line. Noise. Audible noise due to C W E C S site operations shall not exceed, initially had 60 in there, I put 45 d V A averaged over a period of 15 minutes when measured at least 25 feet from any dwelling, school, hospital, church, or public library. I think that should be changed. Structures. Delete that and put all structures. On the date of approval, any conditional use permit from the property owner. One, in the evident, in the event audible noise from, or, excuse me, let's start over. One, in the event audible noise due to C W E C S operation contains a steady pure tone such as a whine, screech, or hum, the standards for audible noise set forth in subparagra, subparagraph A of this subsection shall be reduced by 5 d V A. Two, in the event of ambient noise level exclusive of the development in question exceeds the applicable standard given above, the applicable standard shall be adjusted so as to equal the ambient noise level. The ambient noise level shall be expressed in terms of the highest hole number sound pressure level in d V A, which is succeeded for more than five minutes per hour. Ambient noise level shall be measured at the exterior of potentially affected existing residence, schools, hospitals, churches, public libraries, again, I think, put structures in there, all structures. Ambient noise level measurements techniques shall employ all practical means of reducing the effect of. the effect of wind generated noise at the microphone. Ambient noise level, ambient noise level measurements may be performed when wind velocities at the proposed site are sufficient to allow wind turbine operation provided that the wind velocity does not exceed thirty miles per hour at the ambient noise measurement location. Excuse me. Three, in the event the noise level resulting from the CW ECS exceeded criteria listed above, a waiver to said levels may be granted by the Board of Adjustment upon recommendation by the Commission provided that the following has been accomplished. Three A, written consent from the affected property owners has been obtained stating that they are aware of the CW ECS and noise limitation imposed by this ordinance and that consent is granted to allow noise levels to exceed the maximum limit otherwise allowed. And B, if the applicant wishes the waiver to apply to succeeding owners of the property, a permanent noise impact easement shall be recorded in the Office of the Henry County Corporal which describes the burdened properties and which advises all subsequent owners of the burdened property that noise levels in excess of those permitted by this ordinance may exist longer at the burdened property. Safety. All wiring between wind turbines in the CW ECS substation shall be underground, five feet I put, that's what I penciled in. If the developer can demonstrate the need for an overhead line and the acceptance of the landowners in this line, such option may be approved conditionally by the Board of Adjustment. I question overhead lines, I'll just, I'll leave it at that and we can come back. Two, wind turbines and meteorological towers shall not be climbable up to fifteen feet above ground level. Three, all access doors to wind turbines and meteorological towers, electrical equipment shall be locked when not being serviced. Four, appropriate warning signs shall be placed on wind turbine towers, electrical equipment, and CW ECS entrances. For all CW ECS, the manufacturer engineer or another qualified engineer shall certify that the turbine foundation and tower design of the CW ECS is, is within accepted professional standards given local soil and climate conditions. Six, for all guide towers, visible and reflective objects such as plastic sleeves, reflectors, or tape shall be placed on the guide wire, anchor points, and along the outer and innermost guide wires up to a height of eight feet above the ground. Visible fencing shall be installed around anchor point of guide wires. The property owner must sign a notarized acknowledgement and consent form allowing construction of the turbine and guide wires without fencing as required in this ordinance to be presented to the Commission and the Board of Adjustment. Two, discontinuing, discontinuation and decommissioning. A CW ECS shall be discontinued, shall be considered a discontinued use after six, it was one year, was initially put in there. I, I penciled in six months without energy production unless a plan is developed and submitted to the Director outlining the steps and schedule for returning the CW ECS to service. The CW ECS owner or representative shall admit to county with a notice of abandonment within three months after the decision to discontinue the CW ECS. All CW ECS and accessory facilities shall be removed to, I had six, let's go, let's go back to five. I crossed out four, put in six, it would need to be consistent. Feet below ground level within one hundred and eighty days of the discontinuing, discontinuation of use. Each CW ECS shall have a decommissioning plan outlining, outlining the anticipated means and cost of removing CW ECS at the end of their service of life or upon becoming a discontinued use. C, the plan shall describe any agreement with the landowner regarding equipment removal upon lease termination. D, the cost estimates to decommission the CW ECS shall be made at the applicant's expense by a professional licensed engineer in the state of Iowa and approved by the county. The plan shall also identify the financial resources be available to pay for the decommissioning and removal of the CW ECS and accessory facilities, including transportation, disposal of equipment, and final cleanup of all sites. A performance bond or equivalent financial instrument approved by Henry County shall be posted in an amount determined by the county. The bond shall be in favor in the amount of at least five million. E, following the initial approval of sitting permit for C, for C, CW ECS, the owner operator shall continually renew the financial security every three years throughout the lifespan of the CW ECS. At the time of each renewal, the cost estimate shall be reevaluated under the same procedure as outlined in section D of this article. F, the owner operator shall provide the board with a notice of their intent to continue operations no less than one hundred and eighty days prior to the three-year anniversary of the previous bond filing or renewal and shall apply the renewal, renewed financial security to the board no less than ninety days prior to that anniversary. H, if the financial security has not yet been renewed at ninety days prior to the anniversary of the previous bond filing or renewal, then the owner operator shall take the steps to begin the decommissioning of the CW ECS at that time. Each time the financial security is filed or renewed, it shall be accompanied by a written agreement that stipulates it will apply to all future successors, assigns, assigns, or heirs to which responsibility for operating the system may be transferred between the time of the filing and the next renewal. The financial security shall only be released once the Board of Supervisors can confirm that the land has been restored to its, to its condition prior to the continued, prior to the construction of the CW ECS, including the remediation of any contamination. I, the county reserves the right to verify that reasonable decommissioning terms are contained in the landowner easement. Okay, this, I'll jump down to federal, this is road use agreements, all routes on county roads, now what we use for the construction and maintenance purpose shall be identified on the site plan, all routes for either ingress or egress shall be shown. The CW ECS shall obtain the applicable weight and size permits from the impacted road authorities prior to construction. The CW ECS developer must complete and provide a reconstruction baseline survey including photographs to determine existing road conditions, assessing potential future damage to the development-related traffic. The developer shall provide a road repair plan to elyorate any and all damage, installation, or replacement of roads that might be required. The applicant is responsible for ongoing road maintenance and dust control measures identified by the Henry County engineer during all phases of constructions. And then I just note that this agreement should also be applied if the CW ECS is decommissioned. Drainage system. The applicant shall be responsible for immediate repair of damage to public drainage systems stemming from construction operation or maintenance of the CW ECS. See required financial security. The applicant shall be responsible for restoring or paying, or paying damages as agreed by the applicable road authorities sufficient to restore the roads and bridges to preconstruction conditions. Financial security in a manner approved by the Henry County Attorney's Office shall submit a covering, again, it was initially a hundred and thirty, I put in a hundred and fifty percent, and I would add that in, adjusted for inflation, the cost of all required improvements. This requirement may be waived by the Board of Adjustment by recommendation of Henry County engineer. All right, comment? Suggestions, revisions, additions?
Okay, if we go back to the letter H, signal interference. The way it reads here, the applicant shall mitigate all interference with electromagnetic communicate, or electromagnetic communications such as radio, telephone, but there's no timeframe in there. We, we need to do something about, okay, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it for two and a half years, you know, if that doesn't work, we, I think we need to have a timeframe in there, that if there is a signal interference, that it be dealt with on a timely basis, not, oh, yeah, well, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it, type of thing. I love, does that make sense? Okay. Uh, I think we need to, if there's interference in somebody's communications abilities, entertainments, things like that, it needs to be an immediate type thing, not down the road. What would be a reasonable time on that? Would that tower be justifiably shut down until it's fixed? You know, stop rotation, stop production until it's fixed? Because, I mean, the developer wants them to spin, obviously, wants-
And it's affecting the quality of life of the person.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm, I'm just thinking, how do we, or what kind of a timeframe do we do that? Upon complaint, uh, the, the tower be stopped until adequate repairs, a-
And someone can complain every day.
What, yeah. So, yeah, I, that's true.
From, from a, as far as the standpoint, I mean, there's a lot more to this than, I get a complaint, I've got to first prove that they're the ones causing the issue. That's number one, I can't just say, because you're here, you're, it's your fault. Um, because, I mean, once I determine it's their fault, then I can tell them, and that, that's another point is, what resources do I have? Do I bring in the FAA or, not FAA, but that, uh-
Mm-hmm.
No, the-
FCC.
FCC, thank you, FCC. You know, to help me determine, because I have no way to determine who's causing that interference. If they come in and say, yes, it's them, then I'm going to tell them, you know, you've got, most things, I determine what I think is a reasonable amount of time to correct it.
Well, if in this case it's a quality of life, I'd have to say, for you, my direction would be immediate shutdown, so.
Well, again, so I don't, I mean, this is probably more of a Steve question, but I think we need an injunction to shut it down.
Well, there you go thinking, I mean, what, if we have a, a quality of life issue that wasn't there prior to and happened after the construction and, and operation, I, I think, I mean, there's experts in that field that can be hired to come in and do that, it shouldn't be at the county expense, it should be at, at the operator or the developer's expense to get that verified, if it is, it is, and if it isn't, it isn't, type thing, you know? But I, I, those things like watching the news at, at night are important to people. And I, I think we'd be kicking the business nest if we just let that continue and continue and, you know, you going out and, and verifying it, that's problematic because you don't have equipment, you don't have the expertise, you don't have anything-
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but we, we also have to follow the law.
Yeah.
We can't just make things up, does it, according to law and-
But, isn't it, isn't it part of, if it's found to be a problem on the, the build code, the bill agreement here, isn't that the law?
It may be, that's what I said, that's, that's a really a question for Steve, getting into that prosecutorial part of-
And, you know, if, if things like that are in place in other parts of the county or other parts of the world, the United States, Iowa specifically, you think things like that ought to work in Cornfield County, Henry County, Iowa?
And they may. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, we need to look past them and make sure-
But, yeah, you don't have the equipment to go out and, and verify the, the interference, but there's, there's companies that specialize in that, that can figure that out, and until that's fixed, I, I think it's fair not to be operating that unit, so.
On that vein, the, the question was, how do we know if they're operating it or not? You know, are we going to get it? I mean-
That's a, that's a, that's a pretty tough one. It's just like, you know, when I go, I drive by and somebody has fourteen cars in their yard, are they running or care of this without a permit? Or they just have fourteen cars? I've got to investigate until I can determine, you know, where they fall within the ordinance.
Registration, 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 okay.
Is there a mechanism that they have to provide, saying this tower produced energy on these dates? I mean, is that, I'm just-
That's, that may be-
Is that something you put here or something else?
I mean, is that something that they can, that they say they can provide to us, I would say put it in the ordinance or require us, you know, send this report to the county, you know, every three months or six months or whatever, the reasonable timeframe is.
They, they know on a minute by minute what that's-
Right.
It's generating, so I think that, you know, we would need to have some-
Part of the permit is they have to provide us with a production figure periodically, whatever that period may be.
You know, that opens up the, the concerns for noise. I mean, let's say it, it's spinning at X rotation RPM now, and it's emitting a certain noise amount. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, because I am not a windmill expert, the pitch on those blades can be adjusted, which would, yea or nay?
The pitch on blade, like where the blade is-
Yeah, where, where they rotate, how, how they cut in the wind like a propeller and-
I saw, I know the whole hub can be, I need to check on the-
Yeah, I, I don't even have to check on it, I know that they can be rotated, uh, which would affect the noise thing. So, if we have a noise complaint right now, how do we determine what the, the blade pitch and, and noise was there when we go back to check it? I mean, it, it's changed an electronic keystroke. So, you know, we, to, to compare apples to apples, you've got to have the settings and everything set at that particular timeframe, you know, to get an apples-to-apples comparison. Uh, you know, I, I, I'm just saying if it's making X noise here, and I go out to check it, and the company knows that you're going to be out there to check it, they could, you know, those, those blades could be bladed to the point where they wouldn't make any noise. So, how do we, how do we work through that issue?
That's a hundred dollar question, I know.
And it's not a real decide, maybe that's something we need to consider.
Yeah.
There, I'm going to bring back up the structures under that portion of A, one setbacks. Initially put in all structures. When I say all structures, that's inclusive to, what's the size of the structure, is inhabited by a human being, is inhabited by an animal, is it uninhabited? I, maybe that's way too broad when I say all structures?
We, we currently define, I just pulled this up just to kind of bring up a point. The ordinance currently defines a structure as anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires permanent location on the ground or attachment to something having permanent location on the ground. A structure may also be defined as a building and vice versa.
Does not have to be inhabited by humans.
No, I mean, I mean technically, it's, it's attached to the ground, I mean, if you enter a swing set, it's attached to the ground and it's, it's a structure. So, I mean, I think we need to be a little more specific on, on what kind of structures we're talking about.
Well, when we're talking about measuring the structures, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a picture peek. Let's say this is my property line, and my house is here, and there's a wind turbine over here. Shouldn't I be allowed to use my property here? If I have a, a pond here and a gazebo here that I sit in the evening and, and want to relax without the noises, the wind fl, or the flicker flash, the, all that stuff, rather than measuring to a, a structure, I'm pretty headstrong on a property line measurement. I, I think property lines are important, so.
Okay, so I put in twenty-five, I put in two thousand five hundred feet, Mark has in the previous-
Put a kilometer.
Kilometer, and- And it says, to me, it says from the nearest structure. So, you're crossing, I guess what I'm trying to discern from what you're saying, Chad, is you believe everything should be at the property line?
I think if I want to build a gazebo at the end of my pond that's closer to the wind turbine or structure than what my house, I should be afforded that ability to enjoy that gazebo, pond, whatever, walk trail, whatever the case be, from my property line.
But doesn't that, when we put in a structure, the gazebo would be a, I'm going to use your example. The gazebo would be a structure. So, you would have that 2,500 feet or kilometer or whatever your suggestion is from.
But what if I got a horseshoe pit out there that's there and there's no structure? Wouldn't property lines involve everything? That's, that's my thoughts.
I know it does, the next paragraph does say, "At no time shall any part of the wind turbine and meteorological tower overhang an adjoining property without securing appropriate easements from adjoining property owners." Do you take that out of there? I mean, or do you?
No, I, I don't, you know.
So, basically what you're saying is you would, if somebody had a wind turbine and the neighbor didn't like it, but he is in agreement with it, that section of property line says, if the adjoining property owner has, the adjoining property owner would have the tower owners, because they would have to get an easement to be an adjoining property owner? Because it talks about the tower or the, or the meteorological tower or the wind turbine. I, one thing, I'm going to backtrack here. So, so what, what I'm understanding you to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, you don't want any setback distance in feet or kilometers? Or you just want basically from any and all property lines?
No, I want the setback to be measured to the property line.
Okay.
Not from a structure or anything of that nature. I mean, if I have that three acre yard, I want that setback measurement from whatever installation there is. I think it's fair to go to the property line on that measurement. Not, not my house, that's on the other side of my property. But the property line that I have.
So, what is your distance that you would like from the property, if that's what you want?
On my recommendation that I put and published, give to Joe and the, the board, I asked for three quarters of a mile to be considered.
I do understand Chad's property line. There's, there is some validity to it.
I know people that, that have a, a specific mowed trail around their 20 acres or 27 odd acre pasture, that that is their R and R timeframe, they walk that pasture ground. They, they look at the, you know, the scenery, that's their property. Why would they be, you know, I got to walk into the noise, you know, over here, I got to walk into the flickers, whatever the case be. Why, why not go from that property line, you know, to a, a home? I, especially this time of year, I, I spend better than half of my alive hours outside.
So, if we go from the property line, we're still at differences between the three of us, between 2,500 feet, 3,280 feet, and 3,960 feet. Three quarters of a mile, a kilometer, and 2,500 feet. So.
Yeah.
If we're, we're going to change, adjust, amend, we need a figure between the three of us, as far as I'm concerned, of how far you want this setback. And I guess that's what, that is the reason we're here, to add to, subtract, delay.
Discuss it.
Discuss what we wish to have in the ordinance. So, we average it out, take it all, divide it by three, see what will come up with? I'm not trying to make light of it, folks, I just.
You know, you, you take into account the sun in the low sky, that shadow flicker covers a long ways. And I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to, to experience the shadow flicker on people's houses. I've talked to people, I made the effort to go to, to Monazuma area and talk. And there was one man that, that was, I mean, he lived in a cubby hole. He had curtains all pulled up and, and he said, "That drives me bananas." And I don't want to be responsible for driving somebody bananas in their own home or on their own property because of a wind tower spinning at somebody else's benefit. So, I'm, I'm thinking that longer distance. You know, I'm, I'm thinking three quarters of a mile. I, you break that down. I haven't, you know, seen where, where a tower could be built or anything of that nature. But you get that shadow, Greg, when we were down in, uh, Centerville. We saw how far that shadow carried across that field. You know, when the sun was fairly high in the sky, let alone low, low in the sky.
And the setbacks, they were 1,800, if I remember.
Yeah, that, that's what they had over there, and they said that's what their people agreed to over there.
1,800 feet.
Yeah.
I mean, far.
But that, that was there and this is here. Yeah, I, I guess I would, I would rather err on increased distances than, than regret a shorter distance later on.
Mark?
I'm still thinking, Greg, I'm just thinking, because this property line is something new to, you know, we have to, I have to just Sunday a little bit.
I'm going to interject, I'm going to go back a little again, and I'm sorry for doing this. But I did also have in there a one mile radius of all incorporated and unincorporated communities. I do not know what the city of Winfield, Wayland, New London, Olds, Mount Pleasant have as their boundaries for development, so.
Does anybody have the letters from Winfield and Olds and Swisberg that was sent in asking or, or asking for the, the setback from the?
I don't, I don't recall the distance.
None of them have development boundaries outside of those three limits.
I, I, that's not what I said, the, the letter that they asked.
Right, I'm just saying they don't have a great set of development.
What was, what was the distance that they asked for? To be back from.
The city councils.
Yeah, the city councils. What did they ask?
I'd have to go back and look for the letter off the top of my head.
I would, I, I think, I think Winfield says two miles, if I remember correctly. Please don't quote me, but that's what I remember. I do not remember from Olds or Wayland.
I don't think we know like from Olds, do we?
Don't remember.
Yeah, probably did.
But anyway.
I mean, we're not going to get all the answers here today.
No, I understand that. At least we need your interaction to try to figure out what the ordinance will look like before it goes to public hearing.
And if I interrupt, I'm, I'm sorry, I've got that habit. I know that's not good. Something we got to think, you know, we've all been to Iowa City, we've all been to North Liberty, we've all been to Tiffin, here in recent, you see the, the huge growth on those little communities, those little areas outside. Who's to say that that couldn't be the Wayland? Who's to say that couldn't be the Olds or Swisberg in future times? As Iowa City continues to grow, 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 who's to say? Because I mean, for my house just north of Mount Pleasant, I can be in Iowa City and hop, skip, and a jump. Let alone the, the commute time from town isn't anything anymore at Iowa City. I would hate to be the one responsible for not allowing those towns' potential growth in the future.
Okay, so, I guess we're going to, without a definitive decision, we're going to move on, but please mark under 1B, structure, property lines, that this needs to be decided on. And the setback distances, as well as the radius from a incorporated or unincorporated community in Henry County.
I'll just say this, when you type up a city or an unincorporated town or a what, the radius, I'm, I'm just being, what I'm thinking about. What's the difference of that than anybody else having a home out in the country? I mean, I, I just, I'm just saying what, some of my thought processes, what I'm thinking. I'm just throwing that out for us to consider. I'm not giving you an answer, I just said for consideration.
Chad, do you have anything?
I got another consideration, kind of goes along with a lot of, which I'd like to share with, I mean, I think you.
Well, we're, that's what we're here to try and figure out our thought process.
Yep, you know. I rode a motorcycle up Monazuma, talked to a guy mowing the ditch on John Deere tractor along the highway. Stop, talked to him. I just did a, a cold stop off and, and asked him. He says, "I don't live here." He said, "I really can't talk. I live right in Monazuma." Okay. I said, "What's your thoughts?" Just, just that, "What's your thoughts?" I, I didn't lead in, guide in, anything of that nature. And he said, he was right in the, the booming metropolis of Monazuma, and the town is surrounded by it. He said, "I can't get away from the, the red flicker light all the time. I can't get away from the whoosh, 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 whoosh noise of the thing." You know, he said, "That's a problem." He said, "I built my house in Monazuma many years ago, quiet little suitcase town. Now, it's not the same as what I bought." That meant something to me. So, I talked to another woman. Had, had little bambinas running around out in the, the yard. I pulled up, she was a little apprehensive about a guy on a bike getting off, you know, that type thing. But I took my, and she saw my happy face, so I, I walked up and, and she sat, we sat down on the, the front step and, and talked to her. I said, "Tell me about it," because they lived about quarter of a mile away from a turbine. And I asked her what her thoughts were. She said she moved back to Monazuma, grew up in Monazuma, moved back to Monazuma for family, family issues, you know, people, things happen. They were looking for an acreage. They come back and looking for an acreage, looking for an acreage. Everything was surrounded by turbines in one place or another. They said they have made the choice from past experiences not to live around a turbine complex. I said, "Okay, so what are you doing?" She said, "We had to have a place to live, so we're renting this place. We are now looking out further and further away from where we want to live to find an acreage that isn't, you know, doesn't have the, the wind turbines around them and the, the issues that they're important to them." So, I think, what does that do to property values? If I have that acreage right outside of Monazuma, what does that do to my property value when I go to sell it? And somebody of like mind that she has, I guess I try to think of those. I, I try to put myself in that, that I'm a, an acreage owner. I'm not a farmer, I'm, you know, I'm an acreage owner. That is my little section of, of investment there. What, what gives that I have to take a lesser sell price on my acreage? So, that, that's something I think about, you know? And that was a concern of hers. She wanted to live in the Monazuma area and so far hadn't been able to do that.
Okay.
So, Greg, going through all this, we're pretty consistent with everything and have most things except for this setback or the radius.
Correct. That's our noise audible decibels, DBA, whatever, I'm sorry, whatever DBA is, decibels.
We're pretty, we're consistent there.
Okay. Initially, it was 60. I put in 45, and then it's reduced by 45. It says in the event audible noise due to CWES operations contain a steady pure tone such as whine, screech, or honk, standards for audible noise set forth in sub-paragraph A of this section shall reduce by five DBA. So, that would take it down to 40. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and, yeah, Joe, I mean, if there's a complaint, you don't have the equipment to go out and make your sound. Other than a downloaded iPhone app that you or I or anybody else has, so.
Borrow one like we've done in the past, like, you know, that would be the only way to do it.
That doesn't work very well, but we need to have some ability to hire a sound expert, an acoustics expert, to come in and, and measure things like that. Then that, that gets back into the, the pitch of the blade, you know? Are you measuring apples to apples, you know? When the complaint was filed and when you measure it, the setting's got to be the same on that. So, it, it just, things piggyback on one another to the nth degree, it seems like. And, you know.
I'm going to.
Should the county be strapped with being attentive, trying to figure that out?
Shall we jump to safety on the same page as the noise? And all wiring between the turbines and the CWES substation shall be underground. If the developer can demonstrate the need for an overhead line and acceptance of landowners for this line, such options should be approved initially. So, is anyone in favor or not in favor of having an overhead line? Landowner. I put in no overhead line, but that's maybe infringing on the landowner.
I, I, I'm sorry.
I, I see, that's a landowner's decision, and that's part of the making of the green, the lease. And there's no, we have overhead lines elsewhere, so how can we differentiate?
Well, the only differentiation would be the fact that they're public utilities and this is a private company.
It's on private land.
But it is on private land, I agree.
When we talk about Board of Adjustment being able to make waivers on some of these noise levels and things like that, I guess I don't like that idea. That's like a cop saying, "Okay, it's okay to speed 60 mile an hour here." I mean, the law is the law of the law, you know? A waiver isn't granted to the speeder going down the highway at 80 mile an hour. Well, you know, okay, I'll give you a waiver on this. You know, I abide by that law, you know? So, I, I don't personally. this, you know, abide by that law, you know, so I don't personally like the idea of waivers being issued. There might be some extreme circumstance where it would be, you know, required to look at or something like that, but.
That's the point of putting that in there, is for that extreme, it's just like, you call a waiver is a variance, that's what Board of Adjustment does, there are circumstances where you're allowed to be closer to the line than what the ordinance says, because there are certain circumstances, and that Board of Adjustment is there to look at those individual circumstances. We agree that this is.
I get the variance and things like that, but I just don't like the idea of something that's monumental and extreme as some of these things, I don't like the idea of waivers being given to them, you know.
There are other things that we're deciding that are much more conducive to whether the budget is for that.
Discontinuation and decommissioning.
I think we got it. From my standpoint, that was one of the biggest things I've been harping on all along is decommissioning. And I feel that we have it in hand, that it would take care of anything that could ever come forward, the way we have it written.
With the bond amount being at least five million?
Well, or, but we're asking an engineer to figure out what it is, and that's what I'm thinking, and then that's part of it.
And that bond not ever lapsing, there always being something in place that it would not lapse. You know, in my mind, if a wind turbine doesn't generate for four months or five months or six months, how really needed was it to be there? You know, if there was four months of no production or inoperability of that thing, did it really need to be put there? Did it really need to be built there? And wouldn't that be something to think about on a decommission, you know, type thing?
Well, that goes back to if it's operating or not, then that starts the decommissioning type, right?
But, you know.
There has to be a reason if it's not producing electricity, so.
I mean, the way I understand it and read MISO, all generation can't be running right now, that's why they have the phase in, phase out, some generate, some don't, because the capacity of the transmission lines won't carry everything running at the same time anyway, so they shut them down, I mean, because they're not needed, I mean, they don't have that capacity to run it, so. Warren Buffett made a comment, I think speaks volumes about it years ago.
Is everyone, any more comments or additions or deletions need to be made prior to the Okay.
Drainage systems, we don't have any timeframe on B, drainage systems, we don't have a timeframe of that. I know that it gets back to private property, you know, the property owner, but when we went over to Centerville, there was, the first thing I noticed, and I got a picture of it, of a couple drainage terraces full of water, and it was commented that it wasn't a very flattering type thing, and I asked how long it was, well, later we found out that it was two years later that that terrace was still full of water and the pileage hadn't been repaired. I don't know, if I was a landowner, I'd be raising a fit.
I think what we're addressing here, though, in drainage system, it says the applicant shall be responsible for immediate repair to damage to public drainage systems stemming from construction operations or maintenance of the CED, which would mean our greater ditches, our road ditches, which then fall in support of the base of the road that the farmers and residents are driving on, so the drainage on.
On private, it's somewhat private, yeah, I get you there.
Okay, I will read section 6-2-11-5, ongoing maintenance and waste removal. Maintenance repair replacement of the CSES or CWECS facility. Maintenance shall include but not be limited to painting, structural repairs and integrity of security measures. Site access shall be maintained to a level acceptable to emergency response officials. Any retrofit, replacement or refurbishment of equipment shall adhere to all applicable local, state and federal requirements. B, waste, all solid waste will have generated from supplies, equipment parts, packaging, operation, maintenance or replacement of any and all parts of the CSES or CWECS shall be removed from the site and disposed of in an appropriate manner. All waste generated by the operation shall be removed from the site within sixty days. All waste generated during construction, they have, initially it was twelve months, I put in three months. All hazardous waste shall be removed from the site immediately and disposed of in a manner consistent with all local, state and federal requirements. Anyone have any suggestions or deletions or additions to that part? I will then proceed on to 6-2-11-6, indemnification and liability. The applicant owner and operator of the CSES or CWECS project shall defend, indemnify and hold harmless the county of Henry and its officials from and against any and all claims, demands, losses, suits, causes of action, damages, injuries, costs, expenses and liabilities whatsoever, including attorney fees without limitation arising out of acts or omissions of the applicant owner and/or operator associated with the construction and/or operations of the CSES or CWECS project. I think we have to work out some more things, but I don't think it will be done today, so I guess we can possibly schedule another work session after our meeting on the third. Not on the third, I'm not asking for it to be scheduled at this point.
Those questions that I had initially, I'd give a little opportunity to have them
I have wrote down some dates, I can do them to talk about it. First of all, I've been trying to remember, Julie might, you'll have to help me, the first time RWE came in was in March of twenty-three?
I think it was twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, I think it was twenty-two.
Okay.
They held that initial.
I was just trying to remember.
Right. Because that's when we made the initial change to the ordinance, was about that same time.
We were discussing about that prior to them coming in, we were discussing those things.
Right, that's when we talked about whether it should go to the Board of Adjustment or should go to the Supervisors.
Supervisors, and we chose to go with the Supervisors.
Right, and that's when we changed it from a conditional use.
To the overlay.
To rezoning to overlay.
To overlay, exactly. What was the, that was the reason for the overlay?
Spell it out for Demis 101, why the overlay was ever put together, made, put in place?
Well, there has to be a mechanism for the Supervisors to review it, that would be a rezoning, and you've got two ways to do it, either you come up with an energy zone or you come up with an overlay zone. An overlay zone rides on top of existing zoning. A typical overlay zone would be like for an airport, because you don't just go out and make a zone and say, this is the airport zone, you're going to put airport zone, no matter what, because airports may end up anything. So you come up with an overlay that says, these are all the rules that you have to comply with to have an airport, and once you decide on the place the airport's going to go, here are the rules that are in place, and I'm going to rezone that, and you follow these rules. Otherwise, if you rezone it to the airport zone, everything in that area has to comply with the airport zone and not with the original zoning, you know, you've already got zoning out there with houses and different things, and the setbacks are already in place and so on, and all the rules are in place for all those things, and you really want to change all that along with changing the zoning or, you know, wind guard or whatever, so that, it just rides on top.
But there was no interest in wind energy or solar energy or anything like that when that was put in place, right?
When we changed it, yeah, that's, I mean, RWE was in the area, they were making inquiries, and that's, you know, before that, it would have gone to the Board of Adjustment, it would have been a conditional use for that.
Only thing was, they came in and introduced themselves to us and that was it, that's the only interaction we had.
Well, they come to my house and they ask for your address, and I don't give people's address out like that, so I said, if you know where I live and that I'm a Board of Supervisors, you've done your homework, you know where Mark lives, you know where Greg lives, so.
I remember, that one day Keith was in here, and following afternoon, he pulled into where I was working on the grain bin, oh, I said, hi Keith, he said, hi Mark, so he did not know, and he just stopped by that area, and it was all quiet.
I said, at that time, this would have gone to the Board of Adjustments, five, you know, appointed members of the public would have come up with the conditions that the farm operator, and I said, you, the Board, right now, this is the Board of Adjustment action, do you want it to continue to go to the Board of Adjustment, or would you rather be the deciders on this, and the Board as a whole decided that you wanted to be the deciders? So the mechanism had to change, and like those two, the Board of Supervisors is rezoned. So you have to come up with a zone to rezone to in order to give it to the Board of Supervisors, and that's where the overlay zone came, was as a mechanism that the Supervisors could hear the application for wind or solar.
I still contend that I was the first one to ever get notification that wind energy interests were taking place in Henry County. And I, it seems to me that there was no, it seems to me that the wind energy overlay project was prior to that, and I wonder why, I just didn't know why, why then.
You're saying the overlay came before any wind?
Yeah. Or expressed interest in wind, period, so.
I have to go back against the calendar on that.
I'm pretty clear that there was interest in wind, and that's why the question was put to the Board. I don't know what else would have prompted that.
Yeah, that was my question.
Anything further?
I'm reading through my notes here. So we will decide maybe Thursday, can we redo it?
Correct.
So do you need a motion to adjourn?
Let's have, entertain a motion to adjourn the Supervisor's work session.
I'll read that motion.
Is there a second? Should I get any discussion? Hearing them, all in favor of adjourned, responding, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, saying, signal.
I thank everybody for their interest, and I think that we have, in my mind, accomplished a lot today, we're starting to move forward and not just sitting around turning the wheels.
You don't get one, I don't get three.
What?
Eighty-three, seventy-nine.
What?
Club's going.
Oh, yeah.